Order on Monday, February 6, 2012 at 7:00 PM. If you could all turn your cell phones' pagers off, we'll have the caller guard. [Music] what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Town moderator? Citizen here, yes. I'd like to invite the council out front here with me.
This is a presentation to the Citizen of the Year. A few people have had an effect on building a community like this person has. This individual has affected thousands of lives, including mine. Almost no one in this town has touched more people and affected more than just of the people living in Londonderry and that have grew up here. This is to introduce Londonderry to the world. He basically has an unbelievable gift for music and has grown many, many people with it. Tripped to the Rose Bowl a couple times, St. Patrick's Day in New York, China, just to name a few. And I even think Woonsocket, Rhode Island, I was at one of those with my bass drum. Anyway, would you all please give a big hand to Andy Susie?
Okay, while the council takes its seat, I will announce the head table beginning to my left. We have Assistant Town Moderator John Michaels, the Town Attorney Bart Mayer, Assistant Town Manager Susan Hickey, Town Manager Dave Karen. The council, we have John Farrell, Tom Dolan, Sean O'Keefe, Tom Frieda, and Joe Green. Next is Maxymore Town Clerk and Tax Collector, and then Margot Lepetri, who is the Executive Assistant. The Budget Committee, we start with Todd Johnkis, Richard Dillon, Chris Melcher, John Corin, Lisa Whitmore, doesn't look like she's here, Dan Leekus, and Tom Dalton. Okay. Also, before we get into business, we have committees in town that are looking for members. We need three volunteers for alternate positions to the ZBA for three-year terms. Openings are available on the Conservation Commission, the Elder Affairs Commission, the International Exchange Committee, all for three years. And there's a one-year opening on the Manchester Airport Authority, and that requires a pilot's license. If you're interested, please contact Margot at Town Hall. The purpose of the meeting tonight is to discuss and debate the articles that are on the town warrant. The meeting cannot eliminate any articles from the ballot, and approving or rejecting the article will take place on March 13. The rules for tonight, by state law, the moderator makes the rules and the procedures for the meeting. We will not follow Roberts' rules or any other rules. We will be following the moderator's rules unless the meeting decides to change my rules with an override. After reading the article, the moderator will ask for a motion and a second from the council. The council or the petitioner will explain the article, followed by the Budget Committee. You are then welcome to approach the microphone. When you get to the microphone, state your name and street address for the record. Once you are recognized, you may speak to the article. I will try to recognize you once you get to the microphone. All comments should be addressed to the moderator and no others. We will not allow personal attacks. Keep in mind that it is a work night, and if you get right to the point, keep it short, we'll get out of here on Monday and not early Tuesday morning. Any registered voter may amend an article. Amendment should be given to me or Mr. Michaels in writing, and we have forms up here if you would like to use that. The amendment will be read and then opened to the floor for discussion. When you are ready to vote, I will read the amendment, keeping in mind that the amendment cannot add a new subject and no article can be tabled. We will do one amendment at a time. All voters are required to show their voter card in order to re-enter the meeting and keep your card and your voting papers with you. Moving the article to the ballot does not require a vote in a deliberative session. A secret ballot on the amendment will be taken if five voters who are still present request in before we vote. A recount will be taken on a non-secret ballot if seven voters make a request. Moving the previous question ends debate. It requires two-thirds majority to pass. However, if you are in line and wish to speak for the first time, I will let you do that as long as it's we haven't got on for a half an hour. A motion to restrict reconsideration is permitted after the article has been placed on the ballot. All non-voters are sitting over here to my right and may not vote. We will go over the procedures for a deliberative session throughout the session, so if you get confused, hopefully we'll answer your questions. And if you have questions as we go along, please feel free to ask. We're going to start with Mr. Karen giving the state of Londonderry's.
Thank you. Good evening. Under the revised budget process approved by the voters this past March, the council is still responsible for submitting a recommended operating budget, which can be amended at this deliberative session. The voters in March will then vote to approve or reject the budget. If rejected, the town would operate under the default budget. The council's recommended budget, which is Article IV for FY13, is the same amount as the default budget, which recommends an expenditure increase of 2.3% over this year's operating budget. There are also several initiatives on this year's warrant to begin addressing equipment and staffing needs in the fire department and the continuation of the reserve programs for vehicles, heavy equipment, and town billing maintenance, which promotes tax rate stability. Although the economy is improving, it is improving at a very slow pace, and we expect that to continue for the foreseeable future. However, staff continues to work on projects that will position the town to capitalize growth in the non-residential sector when economic conditions do improve. Last November, the state opened the airport access road, and with that milestone comes a greater appreciation by both state and federal officials of the strategic location and abundance of commercial and industrial land at Pettingill Road. Town staff continues to receive a growing number of inquiries about the area's development potential, while also working with state and federal officials to secure non-local funding for the project, which would reflect Pettingill Road project's anticipated benefits accruing to the region and the entire state. Again this year, I'd like to draw your attention to the town's website, of which we added a feature which should be of particular interest to citizens, is E-Alert, which allows residents and taxpayers to automatically receive as much information as desired, including emergency alerts, meeting agenda and minutes, road closures, and similar pieces of information. We believe E-Alert will help us keep all of you better informed about the activities of town government. On behalf of all the town staff, we thank you for your support and assistance. Thank you.
Okay, we will start with Article Number Two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $537,000 for the reconstruction of roads. Said sum to be raised by the issuance of serial bonds or notes not to exceed $500,000 under and in compliance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act. And to authorize the town council to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes to determine the rates of interest thereon and to take such other actions as may be necessary to affect the insurance negotiation, sale, and delivery of such bonds or notes as shall be in the best interest of the town of Londonderry. And to authorize the town council to accept any funds from the state of New Hampshire, the federal government, and private sources as may become available, and pass any vote relating thereto, and $37,000 for the first year's interest payment and bond issuance cost on said bond, and to authorize the transfer of the June 30 fund balance in the amount for this purpose.
So moved.
We need a motion to bring up and discuss the article.
I'll make that motion, Madam Moderator.
Mr. Dolan?
Second.
Mr. Karen?
The council is recommending this year support for a $500,000 bond issue, which, in conjunction with Article 17, will begin the process to transition funding for road reconstruction activities from long-term bonds to property tax support. The town has approved road bonds during each of the past five years for a total investment of $5.7 million. And if approved by the voters, the council plans to continue this transition into FY14. If you look at the slide in the front of the room, one of the thoughts presented by the council was to allocate in future years, which again requires the vote of town meeting each of those years, any reduction in debt service obligations into the road maintenance trust, as you can see, to continue the transition from bonds to property tax support, whereby the plan presented will be by FY17. Hopefully, town meeting will be appropriating almost $900,000 a year for road reconstruction activities.
Mr. Johnkis?
Yes, the Budget Committee unanimously recommends a yes vote on Article Two.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing no further discussion on...
Barb Statmiller, Fortin Crestview Circle. This might be a stupid question, but I see a lot of the warrant articles — do you mind if I turn, sorry — have the June 30 fund balance. I wish I had thought to think of that number. Does the fund balance cover all of these if passed? Or is there a finite amount in that fund balance for only so many warrant articles? And again, I apologize if that's a silly question.
There is a finite amount in the fund balance, and historically, the council has presented and town meeting has supported initiatives of one-time expenses to be paid from that fund balance.
And would they all be covered? Sorry, if all of the warrant articles pass this year, are they all covered by the current fund balance?
Well, wherever it's recommended a fund balance be used, it is so stated in that article. And so there are funds available for that.
For all of them, if they — thank you so much, appreciate that.
Just a procedural question before we move further for the folks here and for myself. On the bottom of each of the slides, it appears that you're letting us know in advance what the current tax rate is for 2011 and what each article would have for a tax impact and then what the tax rate is as we go along. So I think it's important for folks to kind of take note of that for each of the articles that they discuss. And if the town manager can just explain why we're starting. Our current tax rate from 2011 is $4.74. This article has a $0.00 tax impact, but we're already at .21. If you could kind of just explain that and confirm that what I'm reading is correct as we move through these.
There are two components of your tax rate which is not determined at town meeting. First is the veterans exemption, of which the council voted to increase that each year by $100 to maximum level of $500. And that incremental increase was completed four or five years ago. And to fund that amount is 15 cents on the tax rate. The second component is 6% for property tax overlay. When the budgets are all approved and the State Department of Revenue Administration approves the tax rate, we need to raise a certain sum of money to fix any errors in the assessment list. Or probably more pertinent is that if there are any abatements granted for errors in the list, or if somebody is successful with their property tax appeal against the town, to make up for this loss, these lost revenues, we have to raise overlay funds. And both of those add up to .21 for this particular budget.
Thank you.
Gregory Warner, 10 Pendleton Lane. I speak in support of this bond because the roads in Londonderry badly need repair. However, if we do pass this bond and repair these roads, where will we store the frost heaves for next year? Old Nashua Road is available. Thank you, this is a good idea.
Mary Source, Stugale Road. Can you just explain the difference between a fund balance and an undesignated fund balance? Is the fund balance the money that's left over from last year's budget that wasn't expended?
It adds to that. The overall fund balance is much larger than — well, the undesignated fund balance is funds that are available for expense, although only a small portion of that is being recommended for expenditure because both the State Department of Revenue Administration and the National Governors, the Government Funding Officers Association recommend you maintain a certain amount of that fund balance for cash flow purposes.
Right.
So if you end up the previous year with either unexpended appropriations or excess revenues, they go into fund balance, cannot be expended unless town meeting so directs.
And right now, what is our percentage in our undesignated fund balance? Or in that leftover fund balance?
The...
They recommend that you keep, what, 5% of your budget, 10% of your budget in that balance, in that thing, in that fund?
Yeah, they recommend between 5 and 20% of the operating budget and the school budget, because for those who are not aware, the town is essentially the bank for the school district. We collect the taxes on behalf of the schools and remit the school a check every month. So for example, if our revenues, if our collection rate is low, we still owe that obligation to the schools. That's why we require a sizable fund balance. And given the school commitment and the town commitment, we are — the 5% level is $3.9 million is recommended to be maintained. The 17% is $13.3 million. And currently, we retain 4.25. Of that amount, about 3/4 of a million dollars can be used for projects. So we usually maintain in the $3 million range for cash flow purposes.
Okay, and right now, we have over $4 million.
As of setting the tax rate on November 8, we had $4.25 million, of which some of that is recommended to be spent by this body.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Moderator. Bruce Campbell, 7 Willow Lane. We're asking for $537,000 to repair road — are they roads or highways? It's a little bit misleading because it says highways and then roads.
All town roads.
All town roads. Which ones?
I'll defer to our Director of Public Works.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Janos Szczesny, Director of Public Works and Engineering. We have approximately 14 miles of roads that badly need reconstruction, and that estimated cost for repairing them is approximately $19 million. So $500,000 does not give me very much to start on too many roads. So when you mentioned how many roads, I will be able to do a section of the road. One of the priority of the roads is Lichvia Road from Misty Lane to Mammoth Road. We improved the section already over there, we'll continue on that one. If we have some more money, we'll continue on a list of the roads that we have. Auburn Road needs badly reconstruction, and Noise Road, Stokes. These are the top priority roads right now.
Thank you. Al Baldassal, 41 Hall Road. The question is, you said when "they." Is there an RSA that identifies the 5% or whatever you're maintaining? Or is there a policy somewhere that you come up with that figure?
To my knowledge, there is not an RSA. It is a policy as recommended by the Department of Revenue Administration, the State Department, which establishes our tax rate.
Okay, the reason why I ask is I know many other towns that borrow when they're not getting all the taxes, and that's why I was wondering. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, Article Number Two is moved to the ballot. We will go to Article Number Three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $200,000 to be placed in Town Maintenance Trust Fund created by the voters in 2003 town meeting for the purpose of repairing and maintaining town facilities and to authorize the use of the June 30 fund balance in the amount of $100,000 towards this appropriation. Could I have a motion to bring up and discuss Article Three?
I move that Article Three is read by the moderator be presented to the meeting for discussion.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
I second that motion.
Thank you. Mr. Karen?
Thank you. The Expendable Maintenance Trust Fund is used to maintain town facilities, such as repairing HVAC, plumbing, electrical systems in various town facilities, purchase of equipment for the recreation division, such as bleachers and lighting, replacing the roof on Leach Library and improvements at the highway garage.
Thank you. Mr. Johnkis?
Yeah, the — thank you, Madam Moderator. The Budget Committee, by a vote of one to six, recommends a no vote on Article Three.
Thank you. Seeing no discussion, we will move Article...
If you could start getting in line, just to save time.
This might be out of order, I'm not sure, but can we move to restrict reconsideration on Article Two?
Can we do that? Yes.
So moved.
All those in favor, raise your card. Thank you. All those against restricting reconsideration of Article Two, please signify by raising your card. Article Two is restricted reconsideration.
Anne Gaffney, 28 Tokonell.
Mary Source.
Again, my name's Greg Warner, 10 Pendleton Lane. I speak in favor of expending these funds to maintain the equipment we already have, and I do not agree with the Budget Committee on this item. Thank you.
Greg Carson, 19 Tokonell Drive in Londonderry. I'd just like to know why the Budget Committee's not recommending this, if they could give us an explanation.
Mr. Johnkis?
Yeah, at this point in time, we're trying to find ways of trying to save some dollars in various elements. And oftentimes, in previous years, people say, "Well, tell me where." Unfortunately, this was the "where," one of the "wheres" in this go-around. It's just the economic times trying to find a pocket to save a few bucks.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we will move Article Three to the ballot. Do we have a motion?
Restrict reconsideration?
Thank you. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration, raise your card. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Article Number Four is the budget. Mr. Michaels is going to explain how we're going to do the budget.
Okay, just one of the things that was brought up was that this is the first deliberative session, so Cindy explained more early on, and as we go along, we'll explain a little. This is the budget. What you have to understand is that this is a bottom-line budget. So if you go talking about you want to eliminate something or you want to change something, it's all a bottom-line budget. And basically, the council can spend where it wants. So let's suppose you said, you know, take $200,000 out of the police department. Well, what that really means is you're lowering the budget by $200,000, and the council can basically spend the money as it sees fit. You know, you will have directed them where to do it, but they're not legally bound by it. So I thought as we... So I thought, as we go along, we'll explain some of these things to you. So, we're now doing the operating budget, which is, shall the town raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately. The amount set forth in the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling $26,741,721. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be $26,741,721, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the town or by law. Or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40:13, 10, and 16 to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. Mr. Keefe?
Mr. Moderator, I would like to move Article Four as read to present to the people for discussion.
Mr. Farrell? Moved and seconded. Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Article Four funds the operation of town government for the year beginning July 1st, 2012, for such departments as police, fire, public works, finance and administration, recreation, tax collection and administration, debt service payments, general assistance, planning, library, cable, and economic development. The town council's proposed FY13 budget is the same amount as the default budget and represents a 2.3% increase in recommended appropriations over the FY12 budget. In order to meet the council's goal to first fund critical services and statutory responsibilities of the town, resources were redirected to more fully funded fuel accounts and police replacement overtime and snow overtime cost. The FY13 budget includes more funding for part-time salaries, which were previously classified as full-time positions, as the town has attempted to consolidate and economize on positions wherever possible. With this budget proposal, along with requests in Article Nine, we will allow the town to continue to provide a level of safety services which residents have become accustomed to. In order to accomplish this, the council is recommending reallocations from the library in the amount of $64,000 and the cable division in the amount of $101,000. These resources, along with operating and personnel cost reductions in other departments, contributed to a transfer of $94,000 to budget actual fuel usage, $139,000 for replacement police coverage, $50,000 for emergency snow removal and DPW overtime, and $15,000 to lease a replacement for the Fire Department's emergency response vehicle. Employee benefit costs increased $138,829 overall, and debt service has increased $29,456 from this current year. The council is recommending increases in overtime accounts as it is more cost-effective to fill shifts with overtime rather than hire additional employees considering the increasing cost of employee benefits. This system also provides maximum scheduling flexibility to enhance efficiencies. Thank you.
Mr. Jankus?
Yes, the Budget Committee unanimously recommends a yes vote on Article Four to support this budget, as proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have some questions concerning this here.
Could you just?
Al Baldassaro, 41 Hall Road. I know with many issues going on here in town with people, more free lunches at the school, more people on food stamps in Tannif throughout southern New Hampshire. I mean, it's getting out of control with people out of work. My questions or concerns on this here budget is, does, if everything else passes tonight, is all that in this budget? Or is there, the tax rate will be plus whatever this is?
Each, as Mike Brown pointed out earlier, a lot of these separate articles carry their own tax rate consequences. So this particular article deals with the operating budget only, which addresses many of the town's services, but is not exclusive to the town's services.
And then my last thing is, in order to be fair to the taxpayers that are sitting out here before they vote on this budget, is there any way that you can tell them the bone facts on, if everything passes tonight, what that will do to their property taxes? And then add the school in too? I mean, I know you can't do the school, but if you can tell them what's going to happen to them tonight, so they have an idea if everything passes?
Well, if you, if you look at the slide up on the wall towards the bottom of the slide, it shows that our current tax rate is 474. The cost of this article is $4.59 per thousand. So as of this point in the meeting, again, if it's approved at the March town meeting, then the 2012 tax rate to date is $4, would be $4.83.
Okay, that's on this, I understand.
That's correct.
But I was talking about, so the taxpayers know before they vote, because they're going to vote on other articles, what's going to happen. I'm looking for, like something, if they own a $250,000 home, if everything passes tonight, what is it going to cost each and every one here? $300,000 on a home, what is it going to cost them if everything passes? So they know the truth of the bottom line in dollar.
Mr. Karen?
The, the overall tax rate anticipated in 2012, if all the articles recommended by the council passes, is $4.98, which is a 24 cent increase, not 24%, 24 cent increase. And Sue, do you have that? What's the difference now? Yeah. So the total, on a $300,000 house, the total tax impact for the entire budget, not the tax increase, the tax impact is $1,495 for town services.
So $1,400. Thank you.
Cindy Eaton, 16 Clark Road. Considering what Mr. Baldassaro, Mr. Baldassaro was talking about, it sounds like other warrant articles would be adding to our tax rate. So I'm asking that you please move Article Four to come after some of these other warrant articles that have tax rate impacts.
We're, we're in the midst of the art of discussion of it already.
Well, new information, you know, as Mr. Baldassaro had said, you know, this, you know, I would hate to see the budget pass and then those other articles pass or not pass, and where does the money come from?
Well, there, there is going to be, if I, let me see if I understand the situation. We will understand if this passes, what a number is. And as we vote along the way, somebody can ask Dave or Sue Hickey what the number is, and we will know. As Dave said just a minute ago, that if everything passed, it would be $4.98. So if we don't pass some things, we are cutting from that number. If we add things, we're adding to the number. So you know where you are at this moment. You're at $4.90 some cents.
Okay, well, my concern is that I have a warrant article that may actually reduce the budget. And if we have already voted on the budget, then how can we reduce it?
Once we voted on it, we can't change it again. Mr. Farrell, you had a comment?
That's why I'm concerned.
Mr. Moderator, I believe, since this is a new process, what Ms. Eaton is saying is, is that there may be people who want to add to the budget or take away from the budget, depending on what happens with the other articles. So what they're looking for is guidance from the moderator, saying, can they add to the budget now? Can they take away from the budget now? They know what the other articles are. They know about how much they are. Should they make those motions now? And is that the only time you'll entertain them?
Well, the, we are discussing the budget at the moment, all right? We've taken it up, and we're discussing the budget at the moment. Now is the time, if you want to raise the budget or lower the budget. And let me just explain so everybody understands. If we were to take the budget now, let's suppose everybody finishes talking and it is in the same location. We haven't moved it at all. If a motion to restrict reconsideration is made and passes, we may not discuss it again. If, however, we were to discuss it now, no further discussion, it moves on. But we have not restricted reconsideration. Later, we could bring it, the budget up again if we wanted to. So from a parliamentary point of view, that is what's, you know, what's happening. If you wanted to move it off, the time to move it was before we, you know, before we got here. You know, so if, if you think you want to do something later, then we do not want to restrict reconsideration when we finish here.
So that means if I wanted to add or take away from the budget, I could do it later as long as it was not restricted?
That is correct. From a parliamentary point of view, that is correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Holly and Karen, 369 Mammoth Road. I object to putting off Article Four because you've already started it. And if people have read the warrant, they would have noticed that there were different figures for each article, and they're not included in this Article Four. So it's up to the taxpayers to read what's before them and understand it before they try to change the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jean Jastrom, 19 Horseshoe Lane. I've got a question. I keep hearing tonight that we're going to go ahead and vote this in. Whatever we decide on will end up on, on an article to be voted on next month.
That is correct.
You either vote that up. If you vote it down, then the default budget comes into play, which is stated right up there, correct?
Well, let me just make sure the...
Let me, let me hypothetically say that I'm going to increase the budget by $400,000, and everybody here says yes.
Right.
So the budget goes in, $400,000 more than what the default is. The voters next month at the booths decide that that's too much, no. So they vote it down. The default budget goes into play instead, right?
That is, that is basically correct, yes.
Thank you very much.
Because your, people at the ballot have a choice, either the default budget or what we do tonight. At the moment, they happen to be the same number.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mike Brown, 5 Carousel Court. I apologize for not doing that earlier. One procedural question for the town manager, if I may. Dave, you mentioned during your presentation that the budget that's being presented to us tonight is increasing by 2.3% over the previous year. I think it, I think there's some value to telling folks how a default budget increases by whatever percent and what that is composed of. A lot of folks, you know, don't quite understand how the budget can go up if we don't, if we don't spend more than we spent the previous year.
Sure.
So if that's the case, and we're going up 2.3%, I think it's wise to kind of tell them how that works, and that that's one of the options they'll be voting on when they go to the booth in March.
Sure. Mr. Karen?
Thank you very much.
Under state law, has been, has been mentioned previously, if the voters reject the budget in March, then we operate under the default budget. Now, the default budget is simply the budget under which we're currently operating in this year, and it's increased by any contractual obligations or decreased by any one-time expenses. For example, town meeting in previous years has approved collective bargaining agreements, three-year agreements, for example, which may call for a 1% or 2% salary increase for those employees. So that increases included in default budget. You can see as an example on the slide behind me, debt service is increased by $29,000 next year to reflect the approval of the road bond at the March 2011 town meeting. So you take the current FY12 budget, you add any contractual obligations, and subtract any one-time expenses. The way our budget is constructed here in Londonderry, we have very few one-time expenses within the operating budget. We usually just present those in separate warrant articles. So what you're looking at is the FY12 operating plus any contractual obligations which carry us into FY13.
Brett?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Once again, Al Baldassaro, 41 Hall Road. Would a motion be in order to move Article Four to the end of this here to overrule the moderator? So this is the last item that we take up?
You can always overrule the moderator. The moderator has ruled that we are discussing Article Four now, and we will continue to discuss it.
Then I would like to make a motion there to overrule the moderator, to move Article Four to the end in the best interest of the taxpayers, so they know what they have. Is there a second?
There a second? Moved and seconded to overrule the moderator?
Discussion?
To move the question, Article Four, Al, just to the last item?
Yes, to the last item after all. So, and I can...
No, that's fine. I just wanted to know...
Right. And I want to be able to speak to my motion if I can.
Yeah. Okay. Motion been made and seconded. You may speak to your motion.
Thank you. The reason why I think it's in the best interest of the taxpayer sitting here to move it to the end, because let's say, for instance, some of these other articles get passed, and then all of a sudden, people start realizing, wow, I'm paying more money in my property taxes. They're going to have another bite at the apple on, on Article Four to make a motion and maybe add that in there and subtract something out in order to keep their tax rate down. So that's why I think it's in the best interest to wait to the end. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, discussion?
Well, what, Mr. Dolan, and then, yeah, Mr. Dolan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to speak against this motion. We have, traditionally, at a town meeting, we've been having around 300 people. We have, I think, a little more than half that here right now.
We have 133.
So I think that when we delay articles like this, and this, depending on how long into the evening this, this meeting goes, people will start peeling off as they get tired and fatigued. And there's a very good chance that at the end of the night, there'll be a very small subset of the 130 that are sitting here now, because you just can't, you have obligations and you have children at home, or whatever the issue is. And so that leaves a very substantial part of the budget, well over 90% of the budget, that's going to be left in the hands of a very small handful of people. And I think this motion ought to be, this article ought to be discussed and voted on when the, when the greatest number of people are here in the hall, because this is the greatest amount of money to be spent. And I would suggest that the, the hall reject this motion and discuss it now while most people are here.
I was going to say the same thing as Mr. Dolan. By the end of the night, there could be 20 people that want to increase the budget by $5 million, or 20 people that want to decrease the budget by $5 million. Right now, you have 133. Let's discuss the budget now.
Okay. Yes.
Excuse me. Greg Warner, Mass, Greg Warner, 10 Pendleton Lane. I answer the phone too much. I would like to speak against this motion for very much the same reasons as previously presented, in that by putting the main budget at the end, we will undoubtedly have very few people deciding for the rest of us. I already object to this procedure. I wanted to see a town meeting, but that is well past. I want this discussed now. And if I heard correctly earlier, one gentleman said that the overall tax rate would be approximately $5, $4.98 if everything passes. So therefore, we do have a number to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Any further discussion on the motion to overrule the moderator?
I'm in favor of continuing with Four at the moment. I believe that...
Could you please give your name and get a little closer to the...
Dave Ellis, 1 Wilshire Drive. I'm in favor of continuing it with it at the moment. Often, I tend to agree with Al, but not on this one. I think there'll be too few people towards the end. There are some, I'm one who's going to have to probably leave early, because I got to get up at 4 o'clock in the morning.
Barb Statmiller, 14 Crestview Circle. I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to Al. It looks as though those articles that have any sort of impact are at the very beginning. So if we moved it right after Article Number Nine, all of the articles after that, the biggest tax rate impact is 3 cents. So we'd still be here, most of us would be here, but we'd be able to get a couple other articles out of the way to see what we're looking at for, for figures there in case someone wanted to amend Article Nine, Article Seven, Article Six.
Wait a second. We have, we have a motion on the floor to overrule the moderator. That's the, the motion, and it's to overrule the moderator, which is to, to move the article to the last, to the last item. I'm going to vote that article, that's going to go up or down, and then if you want to go and make something else, you can. Yes?
I was just going to ask you to move the question.
Yep. Mr. Farrell moved the question. There's a second. There's a second. As many as are in favor of moving the question on the motion to overrule the moderator. So the question is cutting off debate on that. As many as are in favor, signify by raising your cards. The question is to move the question, which is to stop debate on the motion to overrule the moderator. All you're voting on now is moving the question, which is stopping the debate on this particular issue. All in favor, raise the cards. Those opposed? Okay. There's no more debate. Now the question is, on the motion to overrule the moderator, as many as are in favor of overruling the moderator, signify by raising the cards. Those opposed? The moderator won one. Okay. All right. Now you're recognized.
So just to clarify, just in case, I will then make a motion that we move...
To overrule the moderator to say...
I'm just looking to, just construct, I'm sorry, not overrule yet, just constructively. We move Article Four to right after Article Nine. And if we don't want to do that, we don't do that. But that's what I'll offer.
So as I understand it, the motion is to to overrule the moderator, to move this, further discussion on this after, what was the article?
Nine.
After Article Nine. Okay. Is there a second? Seconded by Al. Any discussion on this particular motion? Seeing no discussion, the question is, shall we move Article Four, continue the discussion after Article Nine? As many as are in favor of moving it till after Article Nine, signify by raising your cards. Those opposed? It loses. So we're discussing Article Four, the budget. Any further discussion at this time on Article Four on the budget? Seeing none, Article Four will be on the ballot on March 13th. Is there a motion?
Motion to restrict reconsideration?
There is a motion to restrict reconsideration. There is a second.
Cindy Eaton, 16 Clark Road. As I said before, I have an article. It's Article 12. And with my article and amendment to it, we could actually reduce the budget. So if we restrict consideration, we won't be able to do that. So I'm asking that you vote no for restricting the budget.
Okay. And just so that everybody understands what happens, if we do not restrict reconsideration, and the meeting goes till, pick a number.
Two, three?
You know, I'll go and say 11:00. And there are 30 people in here. At that point, the 30 people can bring up the budget and do with it what they wish. So from a parliamentary point of view, you just understand if you don't constrict reconsideration, it can be brought up at any time during the meeting. So the motion before us is, shall we restrict reconsideration on Article Four? As many as are in favor of restricting reconsideration, signify by raising your cards. Those opposed? Reconsideration on Article Four is restricted. Okay. We're now going to Article Five. Article Five. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum set forth below to be placed in capital reserve funds already established and to authorize the use of the June 30 fund balance in the amount of $255,000 towards this appropriation. Ambulances, $75,000. Highway trucks, $100,000. Highway heavy equipment, zero. Fire trucks, $335,000, for a total of $510,000. Mr. Dolan?
Moderator, I move Article Five to be discussed.
Mr. Frida?
I second the motion.
Mr. Karen?
This appropriation allows the town to plan for the replacement of its highway and fire equipment without overburdening the tax rate in any one year. It also allows the town to avoid issuing long-term debt to purchase vehicles. The town maintains a replacement schedule over an eight-year period to forecast future purchases. Generally, highway trucks are replaced every seven to 10 years, ambulances every three, and fire trucks every 12 years.
All right. Mr. Johnkis?
Thank you. The Budget Committee unanimously recommends a yes vote on Article Five.
Okay. Is there a discussion on Article Five? Seeing none, Article Five is moved to the ballot on March 13th.
Motion to restrict reconsideration?
Second? Kathy Wagner. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration, raise your card. Opposed? We shall restrict reconsideration. Okay. Article Number Six. To see if the town will vote to establish a capital reserve fund under the provision of RSA 35:1 for the purpose of replacing various fire, emergency medical, and communication tools and equipment, such as IV pumps, ventilators, rescue tools, protective clothing, and portable radios, and to raise and appropriate the sum of $150,000 to be placed in this fund, to authorize the use of the June 30 fund balance in the amount of $100,000 for this purpose, and to designate the town council as agent to expend. Mr. Farrell?
I'll motion that we, Article Six, for discussion, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Mr. Dolan?
I second that motion.
Thank you. Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Article Six recommends the creation of a new fund to plan for the purchase of emergency equipment required by the fire department to perform its duties. The goal is similar to other reserve funds, such as the one recently moved to the ballot on Article Five, to avoid spikes in the tax rate resulting from the purchase of expensive equipment in any given year. Now, in the slide behind me, those are just examples of the equipment to replace over a 10- to 12-year cycle with annual appropriations to this fund.
Thank you. Mr. Johnkis?
Thank you. The Budget Committee unanimously recommends a yes vote for Article Six.
Thank you. Discussion?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Mike Brown, 5 Carousel Court. A question for the town manager, if I may. Dave, you mentioned this is a new fund. If you could explain to the folks why this year was chosen to start the fund versus what we previously did and kind of bring us up to speed with the change in direction, if that's what you want to call it. And whether, second question is, whether this fund will be an annual policy decision going forward?
I do expect that staff will make a recommendation to the council to appropriate funds to this fund on an annual basis. And I was presented to the council with recognition that a lot of these needs have been neglected in the past. We've been very fortunate to receive some grants on a 90-10 basis, where the town pays 10% to replace some of this equipment. And we will obviously continue to pursue those opportunities. But in listening to the fire chief and senior fire staff, they expressed some serious concerns about the adequacy of their equipment. And we're, again, we don't want to get, we don't want to place the town in the position of looking at an appropriation one year, which would be significantly higher than the requests presented before you because a number of these items would be at the end of the life expectancy or no longer in operation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Moderator. Bruce Campbell, 7 Willow Lane. Can the fire chief come up and tell us, how old is this stuff right now? The life pack, AD, IV pumps, all this stuff? How old is it? I mean, are we at the end of the 12-year cycle, 10- to 12-year cycle? Or are we somewhere in the middle and now is the time to kind of take action? Thank you.
Kev McCaffrey, I'm the fire chief. And yes, we are at the end of the life cycle on some of these items, mainly concerning our life packs, which our newest one is close to seven years old. And we've tried to replace them by the time they get to 10 years old. There are three of them right now that are at 10 years old that need to be replaced. As you well know, technology has come way above itself, and these are considered dinosaurs compared to what's out there at the current level. Some of the other equipment is, we were able to get a grant for our protective equipment. I mean, our SCBAs, they will last another 10 years. But if we don't start putting money away, it was about $260,000 to replace them, thanks to the federal government. And eventually, they're going to have to be replaced out of capital for us. And they were, since we bought them all at one time, they're probably going to be replaced all at one time. So if we do this and we buy in increments, we will be replacing them at a regular level rather than such a spike at that height.
Thank you.
Greg Warner, 10 Pendleton Lane. I recommend that the council establish this fund. I see it as analogy to putting money in the bank to replace your car's tires when they wear out after three years instead of having to come up with the $1,200 bucks in one shot. Thank you. It's a good idea.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Article Six is moved to the ballot.
Motion to restrict reconsideration?
A second, please? All those in favor of restricting reconsideration, raise your card. Thank you. Against? We have restricted reconsideration. Article Number Seven. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $564,244 for the police outside detail fund already established. Such appropriation shall be used for the purpose of covering police outside details and shall be funded from users of the police outside detail service. Any surplus in said fund shall not be deemed part of the general fund. Accumulated surplus shall be expended only after a vote by the legislative body to appropriate a significant amount from this fund for a specific purpose related to the purpose of the fund or source of revenue. Mr. Green?
Madam Moderator, I'd like to move Article Seven as read and be presented to the meeting for discussion.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Chief Hart?
Good evening. I'm Bill Hart. I'm the police chief. And before I start, I wanted to say this is the beginning of my third year, and thank you very much for letting me serve you. It's been a great opportunity. What this is, it's essentially an in-and-out fund, which vendors hire police officers to handle the outside details. And then we manage that so that the officers are paid. There's no tax impact to the town. One of the things we've done differently this year to allow for a reduction in the expenses to taxpayers is that we've put a premium on that outside detail amount that's going to allow us to fund a portion of the outfitting of the new police cars. In 2013, we'll be entering a new lease period, and they don't make the Crown Vics anymore. So we're going to have to figure out what to do next. And we're engaged in that process right now. So thinking outside the box, looking for ways to take away the impact to the taxpayer, we came up with this process, and that's what this allows us to do. So I turn it over to you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Johnkis?
Yeah. Thank you. The Budget Committee unanimously recommends a yes vote for Article Seven for all the reasons just mentioned.
Thank you.
Pauline Karen, 369 Mammoth Road. Any surplus is not expended. Where's the money put?
Mr. Karen?
It stays in the fund.
Was there any surplus from last year?
Yeah. Currently, there's a fund balance in that fund of $122,000.
And that's from all previous years?
Yes, it is. That's correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Article Seven is moved to the ballot. Second? All those in favor of restricting reconsideration? Opposed? Article Seven is restricted. Article Number Eight. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $3,376 for defraying the cost of construction, payment of the interest on any debt occurred, management, maintenance, operation, and repair of newly constructed sewer system. Such fund shall be allowed to accumulate from year to year, shall not be commingled with the town tax revenue, and shall not be deemed part of the municipality's general fund accumulated surplus, all in accordance with RSA 149-1. Mr. O'Keefe?
Madam Moderator, I'd like to move Article Eight.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. Janos?
Janos Shozowski, Director of Public Works and Engineering. This Article Number Eight provides the funds for the operation, maintenance of our municipal sewer system. And it's totally supported by sewer fees and user fees and does not require any taxpayer support. And if you guys have any questions, I have all answers about it. Sorry.
Mr. Johnkis?
Thank you. The Budget Committee unanimously recommends a yes vote.
Thank you. Discussion?
Real quick, Al Baldassal, 41 Hall Road. This fund here, we've been doing this for years, and I, of course, I support it. It's a win-win, no cost to the taxpayers. But what I'm wanting to know, it seems to be separate, a sewer fund. Wasn't it last year was combined, a couple of them together?
No. Last year, it was incorrectly classified as a special revenue fund, which is the same thing as a sewer fund by state law. You have to make sure that those funds are segregated. So we've segregated those out into a separate warrant article.
Okay. So this is basically just a correction?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pauline Karen, 369 Mammoth Road. What is the accumulated surplus in this fund?
Currently, it is $4.1 million. We've been notified for the past five or six years that Manchester will be conducting some significant upgrades to its wastewater treatment facility, of which that's where most of our waste ends up. And so we've been incrementally adjusting the rates to provide a fund balance to pay for those improvements when we get a bill for our proportionate share.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Article Eight will be moved to the ballot.
Restrict reconsideration?
Second? All those in favor of restricting reconsideration? Opposed? Number Eight is restricted. Article Number Nine. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $240,115 for the purpose of maintaining, as much as practical, the following fire department staffing levels. Additional overtime expenditure for 10 personnel per shift, Funding for additional fire personnel to increase coverage level to 11 per shift, $163,550, for a total of $240,115. Mr. Farrell?
Madam Moderator, I'll make a motion to move Article Nine to discussion.
Thank you. Mr. Dolan?
Second that motion.
Thank you. Chief McCaffrey?
Kevin McCaffrey, Fire Chief. This article raises the level of public...
This article raises the level of public safety personnel on duty each day. Currently, we're at 10 men per shift every day, except when somebody takes the day off for contractual leave, sick time, or is out on injury. Sometimes, we drop down to nine and when the budget gets really tight, we'll drop down to eight. This extra allows us to maintain a staffing level of 10. In our strategic plan, we're supposed to be at 14 by now. And we're still at 10 most of the time, or nine most of the time, every day. Adding that 11th staff member would give us some flexibility to keep more staff on. It would also raise our efficiency level by 35% for each person that we put on per shift. We get a 35% increase in what we do. Takes an average of 16 people to do all the jobs on the fire scene. We're only putting 10 right now, or nine on certain days, to do all those tasks. I would like to request that you give us the opportunity to serve you in a more effective and efficient and safe manner. Thank you.
Mr. Johnkis?
Thank you. The, with a split vote of three votes for, four votes against, the Budget Committee recommends a no vote on Article Nine.
Thank you. Discussion?
Anne Gaffney, 28 Token Hill Drive. I have a question. I'm noticing that the council supported this, but it seems like something to me that might end up in an operating budget. So I'm a little confused on why it's a separate article as opposed to being part of your general operating budget and I'm wondering if you could help me understand.
Mr. Frieda?
I think generally, when it's, when you're adding personnel, I think generally, when you're adding personnel to a town, it's suggested by the DRA manual that you do it by separate warrant article first.
So, Budget Committee, could you maybe explain to me, why were you not convinced about this article?
I'll defer to one of my compadres that voted against it.
Yeah, it was a split decision, three to four. As one of the people that voted against it, I saw a fundamental problem with the way the article was written, especially with the overtime. The overtime just seems to build up year after year and there's no insight here as to how to change that in the long run. So, am I against having more firemen? No, absolutely not. My concern here is, is there's no way to address the actual overtime that just seems to keep building and building. I'd like to see more boots on the ground rather than putting more people out there in overtime.
So are you recommending, then, that we hire more full-time personnel?
No. Not according to this article. The way this article is written.
Okay. So if I'm given the choice between understaffing my fire department or funding it with overtime, because those are the only two choices, excuse me, that I'm presented with, it seems to me I should go with safety as opposed to, maybe we should have funded it differently. Thank you.
Gene Jastrom, 19 Horseshoe. You just brought up another question. Number one, I don't understand why the $76,000 wasn't put in the operating budget. You said that you were adding personnel, but actually, we're not adding personnel. Because if you go into that philosophy, the police department also got X amount of dollars more in overtime. And that would also be to add personnel. So, I don't understand that. In regards to the Budget Committee, when you said you wanted to put more boots on the floor, or on the ground, or on the street, that money allows for the boots to go on the street. Right now, we're, I work for the fire department. Right now, we're at a minimum staffing. So anytime a vacancy opens up, that's now overtime. So actually, what it is, is it's just covering to keep the minimum staffing there.
Well, let me address both questions. You asked why it's not in the operating budget. There is overtime in that operating budget already of almost 20%. Now, this article is asking for another $76,000 to add to that. That's why I'm against it.
My understanding is the $76,000 is actually to bring us to 10 people, as a couple, couple three years ago, we were able to do with no problem. We funded 10 people all the way to the end of the budget. Over the past couple of years, that hasn't been the case.
But there's other ways to address staffing levels.
How is that? That's my question. See, if you've got contractual leave and you have to take it, otherwise...
Sure.
So you have to take it. So I don't understand, if we have X amount of hours that need to be covered in a given year, and that's what the overtime does cover, and the other half is whether or not there's a major issue in town where they need to bring more people in, storms or anything like that, that's one thing. But you've got a basic covering that you have to cover the town with.
And you have a basic covering, okay? That you're looking to add firemen on, okay? You add those firemen, that'll backfill those positions. Instead, you're looking to backfill up to 10 with overtime and then add a staffing level of 11. Okay?
But what I don't understand is why that you, why wasn't the $76,000 put in the operating budget? Because that, that's your minimum, that's what your staffing is per day, is the goal of 10. And that is what the town accepted in the past. And over the past couple of years, it's gone down.
Mr. Dolan, do you want to speak to that?
Okay. Okay. So, my question is, is why wasn't the $76,000 put in the operation, operating budget to keep the staffing at 10? It's not adding extra staffing, it's keeping it at 10, where it's supposed to be every day that the taxpayers have agreed to before. They said that they didn't want decrease in services. Well, over the past couple of years, unfortunately, the budget's gotten tight and it's dropped. So, what you're saying, we're adding staffing to it, we're just covering basic spots, and that's the same thing that the police department's doing. They're gonna cover basic spots with their extra money that they're asking for, to cover basic, it's not to cover more. It'd be different if I said, I want to cover 11 people, but I only have 10 people on right now. I want 11 people and I want to do it with overtime. That would be an increase. But where it's a basic, if I wanted to go, if I have a group of people each day that's at 10, and I want to go to 11, and the only way I can go to 11, if I don't hire the people, is for overtime, that's an increase. But if I'm gonna keep a basic level of 10, that's a status quo. That's it.
Todd, do you want to try?
Sure. Thank you. I think it's important to note that, to answer the question about the $76,565, why wouldn't it be in the operating budget?
Yeah.
The reason for that is because it's associated with this particular article for bringing on that extra person. This particular article is to raise and appropriate the additional $76,565 related to overtime associated with this. That's why normally, going forward, you're right, something like that would typically be in the operating budget.
So there's a typo in here, then, because it should read, additional overtime expenditures for 11 personnel per shift is $76,000.
No, they bring on, and I'll ask for some correction here, but that's to maintain coverage at all times of 10 people. In order to do that, the need to make it 11, so you always have that coverage and...
Yeah, so what you're doing is you're dropping, what you're doing is you're dropping a body down to maintain the 10. So you're asking me, or as a taxpayer, to raise and appropriate for four positions to backfill for 10 positions. Now, wouldn't it be just cheaper to pay the overtime to fill the 10 positions and keep them at 10?
And in fact, that's part of the debate, why we're split, because some of us feel that, you're right, it's more efficient with overtime. And some of us felt like, no, there's too much overtime. And we'd like to see staffing at a level, you know, for those who argue that way, we'd like to see staffing at a level that didn't require quite as much overtime, but rather just have boots on the ground. The way this article was written, for those against, and I don't want to speak for those against, but the way I understood their argument was, in fact, the overtime concern. Why keep adding overtime and why not find out efficiencies to reduce overtime and increase coverage? That was the debate.
Yes. And the only way that you're gonna be able to do that is you're gonna have to turn around and you're gonna have to drop manpower. And a couple, three years ago, the town said that they wanted 10 people per shift to cover per day. Now we're down to nine. And you need $76,000 more to get up to 10. And then, you want, if I do my math right, because it's only, what's, six months, I get $480,000 to turn around and go to 11, but I'm not gonna be guaranteed 11. I'm gonna drop down to 10. So, is that really, is that really useful in an efficiency of money to turn around and say, oh, I want to spend $400,000 to have 11, but I'm gonna drop down to 10? Or is it better off to turn around and say that, hey, I need $80,000 to maintain 10? I'm all set. That's my point. Thank you.
Mr. Dolan?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I wanted to point out that while the overtime element is a relic, complicated element of this article, the basic tenet of this article is to add four firefighters to the force. We read the community's wishes throughout the budget process, that the town was interested in a higher degree of public safety and that we were teetering on being unsafe and providing services to the community. So that's why this article appeared. And when it originally appeared to us, it was in the amount of approximately $400,000. So what the council did is, in an effort to help the community transition to that higher level of personnel and the corresponding expenditure, we came up, we met with the town manager and we worked out a hiring schedule that staggered the hiring of these four additional firefighters throughout the fiscal year to lower the cost by $160,000. So the article, while originally read $400,000 and some change, it now reads $240,000 to help with that transition cost and to keep the cost down in the first year.
Thank you. Mr. Melcher?
Just as somebody who did support this, I think there was a fundamental difference on the Budget Committee. We all wanted the boots on the ground. Some of us, again, have a fundamental problem with the contract as it's written and how overtime is staffed at the place on the fire department. Those who voted against want that addressed now. I'm not gonna speak for them, but I believe that's what they would say. Those of us who did vote for, want to address it, but we figured we could do that after this. At this point, some of us want boots on the ground. As far as the overtime and the budget, just, and obviously, most voters are not gonna pick apart the budget and look at everything. If you look at the budget now, and Dave can give us the exact number, even the budget we just moved to the ballot, is still a couple hundred thousand dollars underfunded for the overtime we're going to spend, correct me, at this point. So even without this, the budget is still way underfunded. Is there, do we need changes in staffing? Maybe we do, but we, as a committee, for the people that came this year, heard three things. We heard roads, we heard police, and we heard fire. And those of us who voted for this, were voting based on what we were told, that people want more boots on the ground.
Thank you. Mr. Lycus?
The only problem that we had with this article is that you've built in overtime. And I just don't understand, if you increase staffing, shouldn't that decrease overtime? I have no problem with hiring more firemen. I just don't think that we should automatically stick overtime already right in the budget. That's the only problem. Hire four, hire five firefighters. But don't just automatically assume that the overtime is okay. I think you should try to find a way to curb it down, not rev it back up. That's the only problem I had with the article. But if anybody who disagrees with me, you're certainly gonna have an opportunity to go to the polls and vote for that. It's just my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Mike Brown, 5 Carousel Court. Personally, I'm okay with the council's putting this forward as a separate warrant article. That's a policy decision, I think, that you were elected to make and I'm fine with you testing the waters with the voting public and see if they're in support of this. I also, having paid attention to the Budget Committee, as an independently elected body, you have the right to disagree with the council anytime you want and you have a right to disagree with some of us taxpayers. So don't feel bad about dissenting votes, otherwise, why are you there? In terms of this article, Tom, you stole my thunder. The funding for firefighters is not really $163,000. It's, and people should know this, it's $327,000. So, I'd like maybe the town manager to kind of walk the public through what the real costs of this are and when they'll hit and how this, if this is approved, which I'm personally in favor of, what it means for the default budget going forward.
Mr. Karen?
As Council Dole explained, this article would provide us the funds to incorporate four firefighters into the FY13 budget at the half-year level. So, looking forward to FY14, the overtime would be there, so there wouldn't be another additional increase in the overtime. However, our personnel costs would increase by additional $163,000 in FY14 to plan for 12 months of employment for those four positions.
And how does, how does a yes vote on this impact the default budget going forward?
Well, it's similar to like a collective bargaining agreement where there's the voters' guidance of increasing operating costs. So then, if we have four additional people, then the default budget would increase accordingly.
Yeah. So, in a simplistic way, this is not a one-time expense and a one-time decision. It's a decision to bring people onto the payroll and there's an annualized impact accordingly.
The recommendation is incorporate this into our operating budget for next year. You know, the council and/or town meeting may vote otherwise, but that's certainly the intent at this point.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Dave Ellis, 1 Wilshire Drive. To some extent, Mr. Dillon stole part of what I was concerned about. I'm concerned that this article, and every time we see it come up with something with the police and the fire department, it involves overtime for something that appears to be a regular day-to-day happening. Surely, it would be more effective to hire the right number of people and use overtime only for the exceptions. If I look at this one, I'm far more supportive of adding four additional people than I am of adding any overtime.
Mr. Frieda? I'm sorry. Mr. Farrell?
Ladies and gentlemen, the reason that we are looking at the overtime piece is, is that for those of us, including myself, who work in the private sector, we look at overtime and say, that's to increase productivity, to add more work duties, to get more things done. The way that overtime is used in our budget is, is if we are short-staffed, if someone gets hurt, if they are on vacation, the benefits that we pay for our employees are about 30 cents on the dollar. So if we hire an additional person, they cost us $1.30. They don't cost us a dollar, they cost us 30% more. So we utilize overtime to keep our costs down and for the incremental benefits that we pay our employees. Just so everyone understands, that's the reason why we use overtime, that's the reason why we don't hire more personnel, because it would actually cost more. Thank you.
Mr. Green? No, you're all set. Mr. Corrigan?
One of the decisions that I voted no on this was that I heard the position that we need more personnel in order to keep up with equipment. We voted over a half million dollars toward new trucks and $150,000 on another prior warrant to support increasing safety equipment. So that certainly should bring down the number of people that are required on the fire department to attend to aging or equipment that needs to be up-kept in a better fashion. It would be nice if we could staff 14 or 16, but there's only so much money in this budget. So I put my priority on replacing the equipment that I was told would be a catastrophic loss if we lost a truck that couldn't go out to a fire with any personnel or equipment that supports a firefighter once he's in a fire. The additional people that we're talking about is double the number you're looking at. And we were asked to look at an annual budget. That's half a year, because the proposal is to delay implementation by six months. So you're talking double that amount on an annual basis and going forward, you're gonna have those people on your department for the next 20-plus years. Their salary's going up, their benefits are going up. So, those are important considerations. In this year, would it be nice to add personnel? Yes. But I voted to put it on the priorities that I heard from the department rather than the personnel at this time. That was my mindset.
Thank you.
Madeline Demule, 29A Boyd Road, London, Nary.
I guess I would like to hear more from the chief about the data-driven research on staffing. It's my understanding that we're really still critically understaffed, even with these numbers, that fourteen, which is in the CIP, is really what the National Fire Chiefs Association minimum standards are for safety. And one of the things that really concerns me is that I really appreciate all the public officials looking at our budget in terms of the current economy. But I moved to Londonderry, I pay, I think, a fair tax rate. I know a lot of people think it's high, but I really do think our officials do a really good job scrutinizing. And I think that safety is something that we shouldn't even consider cutting. I totally disagree with Mr. Corrigan in terms of, do we choose equipment or personnel? I think that public safety is a no-brainer. Equipment and personnel, at minimum safety standards, that's research-based, data-driven, is the minimum in a community like Londonderry. It shouldn't even be considered as less. I think the council should really hear that loudly, at least from this member of the public, that I want those departments staffed at what the research shows is what minimum standards are. And I know that those standards are still low at these numbers. Could I hear from the chief about what the Chiefs Association says about our staffing? Because I read about it this week, and I heard it was quite a bit less than what we actually have. And, you know, I'm sorry, there's a debate about overtime, but I really think the issue is the number of people on those, that equipment that we did purchase. Thank you.
To speak about standards, the NFPA, which is a standard-setting organization, says that we should have sixteen firefighters to do all the jobs on the fireground. For a town our size, we consider, you know, fourteen on duty as being at the minimum base level for us to operate all of our, to take care of all the tasks per day, all the calls that we do. We do about thirty-five hundred calls a year, emergency calls per year, that we need to staff people for. That's what we decide is a minimum staffing. Again, there are, when we talk about standards, they've done a standard that we should have, to be most efficient, we should have four to five personnel per piece of apparatus that we have. And if we take the three engines, the ladder, and the two ambulances, and so forth, that's where it gets us to being sixteen people on duty. So, we can talk about standards, we can talk about what their requirements are when they look at it. However, we take a kind of an average and a base on what it takes for our operations to be able to handle the job that we currently do now for the town. And we've put it in our strategic plan to try and make that fourteen level. And this is a one step towards that fourteen level, toward try and meet some of those standards.
Chief, can you hold up for a second?
Sure.
Al Baldassaro, four... Okay.
Mr. Dolan?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The questions and the discussion that Chief just discussed are quite valid in terms of the standards and the numbers and so forth. But I want to take it to a more understandable level in our community. A real-life example, a hypothetical. For example, let's say you live in the north end of town, and your house catches fire, and a fire engine responds to your address. The fire engine's going to show up with two firefighters on that engine. And if there's a rescue to be performed within the dwelling, there's a real risk of whether that's going to happen in a timely manner. And I see Captain Rogers is in line, and I would ask Mr. Baldassaro if you would concede, and Pauline, if you would let Captain Rogers describe what happens when a fire engine staffed with two firefighters shows up at a house, dwelling fire?
Thank you very much. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Jim Rogers, Five Crosby Lane, captain of the fire department for twenty-two years. Sir, what you're referring to, first, I want to thank the town council. After the tragedy on Hemlock Street, I was the author of the after-action report for that. I wish members of the Budget Committee were there that night, because you would have been educated. You would understand replacement costs. You would understand staffing. You would understand how the fire department is undermanned, why we are running with nine guys. It's not like private industry. When we run with nine guys, what we do is we drop down a firefighter. In private industry, you don't fill that slot for the day. The invoices fill up. For us, it's an exponential decrease of manpower. It's unbelievable. And what Mr. Dolan is referring to is a term that we use that is unheard throughout the country and not recognized by any safety standard or a third party. It's called dead Manning the fire pump. So if the fire is in the south end of town or the north end of town, we're running at nine, it's two-man engine companies. Those guys are leaving that fire truck unattended, leaving that mechanical device unattended, going into that burning building to look for whoever it may be. We talk about fires all the time, but let's not talk about fires. Let's talk about emergency medical calls. Forty-six percent of the time, two paramedics and two firefighters, two ambulances are at the hospital. I give the town council exemplary credit. Many members of the town council had questions. They came to the fire station. They asked, they wanted to educate themselves so they could vote on this to the best of their ability, and I give them the best credit. Councilor Farrell did a great job just explaining the overtime cost. The overtime cost, we don't have time to discuss it tonight, because we need to talk about it at another time. But it's clear that you're really not getting it. You're really not getting what the coverage is, what it means to us, what it means to have bodies on duty. Okay? At the Hemlock Street fire, what that did was that illustrated exactly what the manpower, not just for fire emergencies, but a lot of different emergencies through town. We also looked at, by putting, you know, three guys down at Station Two to eradicate that two-man engine company, we would be able to put, almost thirty-five percent of the time, a third ambulance in play. What does that mean? By putting a third ambulance in play, that means revenue-wise, if you want to talk revenue, that's about another forty-five thousand dollars. How do we figure that out? We receive mutual aid about a hundred and twenty times. We're getting an ambulance from Derry. What does that mean? That means we're losing revenue. But that's secondary. That's the backseat. The front seat is whoever needs an ambulance in this room when there's two ambulances out. That means you're waiting sixteen minutes. You are waiting sixteen minutes for the ambulance. The voters tonight, you have a choice. If you want to wait the sixteen minutes, vote this down. If you don't want to wait the sixteen minutes, and you want to up the chances of having a third ambulance respond when a loved one needs that, I urge you to vote this in. If there's any other questions, I'd love to ask.
Thank you. For the record, Al Baldassaro, Forty-one Hall Road. I, first of all, want to thank the Budget Committee for standing up for the taxpayers. I'm going to tell you why in a second. Okay? It's a tough decision. Your vote has nothing to do with the fire department, and this vote ain't about the fire department. God bless them. Yeah, they do do a good job. Okay? But my question is for the chief. Chief, I'm going to put on my state rep hat here, because a lot of us at the State House have issues on the national codes, and we have issues on the national standards. And the reason why we do is, can you answer me, the standards that we're going by, are they the same for New York City, for Boston, for California, Los Angeles, as they are for here? Is that correct?
As far as the standards go, yes.
Okay. Then my next question is, do we, and I've been in other towns and stuff, that we all, we all have, what do you call that, agreement, that we come to aid for each?
Mutual aid agreement.
Mutual aid. Now, if there is a major fire like we had here in Londonderry, we've had one. God bless the family, I feel bad. But the bottom line is, didn't we get mutual aid that night?
Yes, we... But the time limit it takes to get mutual aid is the issue.
Okay, my other, next question is, I understand the time limit, but the time limit, isn't it the same if the fire's in South Londonderry, from our vehicles coming from North Londonderry to go help with the two firemen there, to help the other two stations?
The same time?
We have three stations, right, in Londonderry?
Depending on where the location of the incident is, the time limits change. First response, there's a first response time, which is from the south station or the north station, wherever the call is. They're there within the normal time of four to six minutes. For the third station to get there, it's a matter of travel time and distance.
Okay, besides that fire, and have you, are there any major, I mean, I don't see the sky...